Stillwater, the city of Stillwater has implemented the use of a system that acts as a mass notifier. It is designed to keep Stillwater residents, businesses, and others informed of emergencies and non-emergency events. The service allows you to sign up to get alerts on home.
Well, good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Stillwater Planning Commission Tuesday, October 3rd, 2017. The first item for business is a miscellaneous item from the Planning Commission for discussion and possible action. We are to appoint a Planning Commission representative to the Project Plan Review Committee. We've all received a letter from the mayor for that. Do we have any nominations for that position?
Yeah, I'll do it.
I'll nominate Commissioner Booker.
Second that.
It has been moved and seconded that Commissioner Booker will serve on that commission. All those will vote at this point. Vote was for yes and no nos, and I am supposed to deliver this envelope.
Thank you very much. I will, I will take the envelope.
To whoever was on that. So there we go.
Thank you.
Please don't open it here. Surprise. The next item for business is land use items for discussion and possible action. Trinitas Form-Based Code Alternative Compliance, PZ-17-2241, requesting review and approval for an alternative compliance. Property addressed as 416 West Maple Avenue and 113 Southwest Street, located in the Form-Based Code area within T6 zoning. Evans.
Good evening, Patty Evans, Development Services. There are three items on this alternative compliance, and we'll go over them one at a time during this presentation. This is the boundaries or the property. This is Elm Street, Duck, this is Maple, and this is West Street. So here's Eskimo Joe's, this is the YMCA. So it's taking up most of this half-block area. It's located in the Form-Based Code area, in the T6 or Transit 6 area. It also has a 75-foot limit, height limit. This is the street view along, this is Duck, and over here is Maple. So these apartments will be going, and then there's five structures up to Elm Street. I'm not sure we can see all of them, but there's five of them in there that will be This is the Elm Street view up here at the top, and these are two houses that are in the area. This is Eskimo Joe's parking lot. This structure is not part of the project. West Street view, see, there's five structures on West Street. This is a single-family house. This is a quadruplex. This looks like a single-family house, but there's also two small structures behind it that look like houses or apartments. This is a color rendering of the project. This is at the corner of Duck. This will be Duck, and this is Maple. This tower here, corner tower, has the leasing office down on the first floor. I believe the second floor is the workout area, if I remember correctly. The applicant is proposing a seven-story apartment building with a parking garage in the center of the building. We're going to go over this color rendering a little bit, explaining a few things, and then we'll get into the elevations. The first thing we're going to be talking about is the 10-foot setback on the fifth floor. Step-back, I think I said setback. It's a step-back. So anything over four stories should be set back 10 feet, which means the top three floors of this would be stepped back 10 feet. The Form-Based Code does have design elements, including proportion and articulation, but these are separate requirements from the 10-foot step-back requirement. In the Form-Based Code under proportion, it describes what is a base, a body, and a cap. The base is the ground level and extends a minimum of 18 inches about above ground level. The body is the majority of the building, and the cap is the parapet or the roof line along here. The components are to be clearly identifiable with horizontal elements, and the body must be a minimum of 50% of the total, total building height. You can see on this, the first two floors, this lighter color, is a stone masonry. I guess that could be considered the base. The next three stories in some areas are brick. You can see brick here on the corner tower, and then you can see some brick here. But it, they're broken up with other materials, like you can see this is stucco that comes all the way down to the stone masonry. Then it shows top two floors here as stucco, but then we have a different color on the parts that jut out. And even though you can see a lot of brick here, and when we get to the elevations, you will certainly see it, the south and the east facade does have a lot of brick on it, much more than the north and the west facade. And there is not an identifiable horizontal element to show where the body and the cap In the articulation, the code requires building facades to be divided into distinct sections, and you can see that this is basically divided into distinct sections by the parts that are recessed. So they have done a good job with that requirement. Okay, this is the south elevation from Maple Avenue. This is the corner tower that has the leasing office. This is the entrance to the parking garage. You can see that the lighter color here on the bottom two is the stone masonry. I believe this dark area is the brick areas, and it looks like the rest of it is stucco. These elevations did not have a material list to show what was what, so that's what I am assuming. This is the east elevation. It's been divided. This top one is the south half, and then the bottom one is the north half. This is the, the tower with the leasing office here, and you can see brick. You can see the stone masonry on the first two, and then the brick, and then the stucco. On the north elevation, you can see there's, there's brick, a lot of brick right there at the corner of Duck and Elm, and down here at the corner, there's only one piece in between. Most of it looks like it's stucco. This is an important street. Eskimo Joe's is on this street, so there's a lot of vehicle traffic, and there's a lot of foot traffic from the apartments that are on Elm on the east side of Duck. And this is the west elevation. They have carried the stone masonry around to the west. This top is the north side, I believe, and the bottom is the south. So on the north side, there's one piece of brick, or one area of brick. On the south, the brick is found at the corner, and there's not anything else. This west street is very narrow. It probably was an alley at one time that has become a street. So you could say this was the back of the property, probably wouldn't have the vehicle and foot traffic like Elm Avenue would. The second item is the awnings, and these are examples from the code of acceptable awnings. It's more of a traditional look, and this was specifically in the code for, to avoid metal and other non-traditional materials. This is the shape of what they're proposing. It's got, it looks like it has metal around it. I'm not sure what the center is, but it, this is, it's very similar to this. And the third item is the sign. They are only proposing one sign, and the sign portion of the Form-Based Code is very different from the sign portion in the Land Development Code. The intent was to allow for the signage for wayfaring, find the business that you want, but not be intrusive to the public realm. So most of the signs in the sign code are much smaller than what's in the Regular Land Development Code. Like I said, he's proposing one sign. It is on the corner tower with the leasing office on the south side of the building. It is, this type of sign is called a blade sign, and we have here the requirements for a blade sign in the Form-Based Code and what they are proposing. So the required is 42 square feet. They're proposing almost 100 feet, 98.56. Maximum width is three. The proposed is three and a half. Maximum height is 14, and they're proposing 28.16. The projection out from the building is not supposed to be over four feet. There was no measurements, as you can see on here, how far it is projecting out, but the sign itself is three and a half feet. I'm thinking there's another foot, foot and a half in between there, so I'm saying about Okay, our findings include: The intent of the Form-Based Code is to accommodate all modes of traffic, but focuses on creating pedestrian and bicyclist-focused atmospheres. The proposed building is the first structure in the, in the area to be over five stories. The fifth and seventh floor, fifth to the seventh floor of the proposed building are not being delineated in any way to give a sense of recession. The metal awnings are considered non-traditional in design. Metal awnings have been approved for other developments in the Form-Based Code area. Blade signs normally project away from the building and at times over the right-of-way. And this next one, the proposed sign does not project away from the building. I'm not sure how that got in there, because that's not true, as I just showed you. And the proposed sign is in scale with the building. Do you have any questions for me?
Is the, what is the overall height of the structure?
It is 75 feet.
And is there any thing for any commercial or mixed use on the lower floors at all? Is it completely residential?
Well, right now, they have it all residential. We have suggested that they put some, especially along Duck, but right now, I believe they have it all residential.
Thank you very much. All right. So we'll open the public healing hearing. Sorry about that. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the item, that is, in terms of the items, one, two, and three, I presume, all three items, please come forward, give your name and address for record.
Good evening. Kelly Harris with Keystone Engineering located at 923 South Lowry. Here representing the owner tonight. And I'm just going to kick it off and kind of give a more in-depth overview and how this is located on the site. The owners are here tonight, as well as the architect, and you'll be hearing from the architect later. So like Patty said, this is a seven-story structure. It includes the parking garage that's completely wrapped, and so on the right-hand side of the screen along here, this is Duck. On the top would be Elm, Maple is on the bottom. So we've got the seven-story structure. The parking garage is, is this middle large body of the area, and then you can see the apartments that are, that you would see from the streets that are located along the outside. So the first one through four levels would, would look like this, and then at the fifth level, the amenities are going to be right on top of the parking garage, so on top of the, that deck, this would be the amenities area, again, still all wrapped. So the fifth through the seven levels would either look out at the amenities or look down to the amenities in the center area. So even the amenities, you, you could say they were wrapped away from the streets as There's a total of 204 units with 704 beds. The parking requirements are being met by code as, as we have it shown. The, like Patty said, the main leasing office is located down in the, in the corner at Duck and Maple. The main vehicle entrance is located away from the intersection down along Maple, so this would, they would enter here. The bike parking is in this area up here, so it's nice and secure. They would enter off the alley or West Street and along with the trash, so that's not on the main streets as well. There are several pedestrian entries located around the site, on each side of it, for easy access for pedestrians. The visitor parking will be easy to access in this front area of the parking garage, and then it would be gated for the rest of the residents. So there's a nice area that they can get in, turn around, and come back out without having to go through any security. Kind of all I have for the overview of the, of the project. The architect's going to come up and talk about the rest of the building. Do you have any questions for me, or I'd be happy to come back later if you think of them. Thank you.
Hi, this is Chen from Humphreys and Partner Architects. I'm the designer for this project, and I was just going to quickly hit the point that Patty was mentioning about the three alternative that we are asking for. So the first one would be the 10-foot step-back between the fifth floor and above. So for the Form-Based Code that we are having, the way they illustrated it, it's the building below fourth level will have no recess, and the building above fourth level will have 10-foot step-back from the right of, right-of-way. And the way, this elevation, our project is, the way we are working is, we are creating a set of five-feet recess of bay, as you can see from this rendering. And the, the further point from the facade of the building to the edge of the street will be an average of 25 feet with 11 feet sidewalk, and in some cases, six feet sidewalk. And as we can see from the previous page, we, no. Sorry, I don't know how to get back. Okay, right here. So as we can see from this duck, duck street, we do have even more recesses from the street so that we can later on work with our landscape to help create an even more pedestrian-friendly environment and to create a more interesting streetscape over there as well. So, and the next point would be for those vertical, so those, for those vertical bays, we articulate those with, first of all, with those Juliet balconies, and second of all, with those eyebrow canopies on Level 2, 4, and 6, as well as those cornices on Level 5 in some of the bays. So to add another dimension to the overall scale and massing to help furtherly divide it and break it down. And on the street level, we do introduce this canopy, which to help even further scale down to, to be more pedestrian-friendly from a street point of view, from pedestrian as well as those bicyclists. And this building, as Patty was mentioning, we are breaking it down horizontally with three portions, so the base, and the body, and the top. And we're treating it differently with three, for different materials on each portion, both with texture as well as with colors. So on the base, we're using the stone masonry, the kind of white beige color, and on the body, we're trying to use brick veneer, and on the top level, we're using stuccos, and on those vertical bays, we're introducing the cementitious panels. Well, on the corner element, we not only recessed the corner to relieve more space to, to be with, to relieve more space for the pedestrian, and also we're introducing the same material palettes with the cementitious panel, but ran it vertically just to address the significance of the corner, but also with the help with the canopy that on the street level will help maintain that pedestrian-friendly feeling for pedestrian and bicyclist. And these are some examples of a project that has been approved with similar skill, as I was mentioning before, to use a different variety of materials and also to recess the building with five feet or even more, where, and also with the help of different accent of the canopy's cornices. We are creating an even richer streetscape for the pedestrian and bicyclist. And the, the second item we're requesting for the alternative compliances are the metal awnings.
Can I ask some questions about the first item? I look at that, and that is the south side, and that looks nice to me. When I look at what the proposal is on the north side, it does not have that look. It illuminates a lot of the brick. Why is, why is that?
I want to explain, I want that, explain that further. So the elevation that Patty was showing earlier, that is, that is the, the north of the elevation where our, the rendering itself is further developed than the elevation, because the elevation, yeah, yeah, sure. So the elevation, it, it is in a schematic design phase, so those are not, you know, fully developed than the rendering itself. So we will carry that brick veneer all the way to the surrounding.
So what I see on the south side will appear on the north side?
Exactly.
Okay. That answers my question. Thank you.
Now I'll go back.
Okay. Sorry. That is a very important.
I understand about being in design. I just want to make sure that I understood your design intent. Your design intent is for the north and south side to have similar brick, and that, and I appreciate that.
Okay, because on Elm Street, it's a very important street. Apparently, as Patty was saying, we do have those nice restaurants and, you know, a lot of traffic on that street, so we will make sure we carry that language all the way around this building. So the second item that we are requesting is the metal awnings. So from the Form-Based Code, it's request material to be fabric, and it also requested to address the entrance point. So for our project, we have two sets of different canopies that are made from metal, which is more rigid materials that goes better with our building material palettes. And on the street-level canopies, we're using them to, first of all, to be an identify point for the pedestrian entrance level as well as the vertical entrance level. And also in the common space area, like the leasing office, we're trying to use those canopy as well to identify those space. And like I was saying, those, does help identify and scale down for the pedestrian-friendly atmosphere. And on the other, the other kind of canopy, we're trying to use here on Level 2 and 4 and 6, those eyebrow canopy that helps together with the carnice and the recess of the base does help together to bring down the overall scale to be more friendly. So those are the metal awnings. And the third item would be the blade signings. So the Form-Based Code requests a maximum of two signage, blade signage with a maximum square foot of 42. Where, as illustrated on this rendering, we are suggesting roughly 100 square feet single wine, single one blade signage, where I, we think just as it can be illustrated on this rendering, it's just in proportion with the overall scale of this entire building. So, so yes, that's our three item that we are requesting for the alternative compliances. Do you guys have more questions?
No.
All right. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the item? Please step forward. If there is no one else, anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the item? Please step forward, give your name and address for the record.
First, I'm clear, Robert Williams, 516 West Elm.
Come up to the microphone.
Robert Williams, 516 West Elm. And I'm not necessarily speaking in opposition to the project, but I do have some questions, and I know this is the only open public forum to this, so really, some of this is directed at you all as well as city staff, but some concerns on the construction side of this. I know when we've had other apartment complexes built in town, they've had to close city streets, and closing West Street or Elm Street is not a good, I, I work and represent Eskimo Joe's. West Street is critical to our business and the service of our business. Elm Street is obviously critical to a whole lot of traffic going into campus, not only for us, but also just campus and everything else. So I'm just a little bit concerned about that, but that, I guess, will come at another time. They did mention the 75 feet, and I am curious, or just where is that 75 feet measured from? Because the elevations on that, on Maple versus Elm, because that street going to the north does fall, to the, it does fall, and so is it 75 feet? Where is it 75 feet? And is it 75 feet at the highest point? So, and then the last thing would be the consideration of utilities in the area. I don't know, I'm sure that it's been thought of, of where we're going to pick up water for your all's building, but I know the West Street water line is shot. It is scheduled for repair in 2018, but I don't know if that'll actually happen. We'll just see. But like I said, I'm not opposed to this, just have some concerns in the construction, being so close to a business and how we're going to work together to make it all work. That's, you know, I want to find the solutions to make it all work.
So in terms of question number one, in terms of closing the streets, we have no authority over closing the streets, nor can we make that a requirement? Is that correct?
Yes, I understand. Again, this is the only public hearing on this project, so.
And since I worked at the university, worked on construction projects, I, I fully agree with your statement about closing streets, and I prefer not to close those streets either, but, and I, and since it's a public forum, I want to say that, but I have no authority over that.
The way they're going to build the building, I have been told, though, is going to help facilitate some of that. The other side is too, we have more setbacks on Duck Street as well as Elm. I think there's a bigger setback. The setback on Maple is not very large, but the setback on Duck and on Elm is a little bit more, so they'll have some more, but also because the garage is in the center of the building, they'll be able to start there and work around it, so that's going to help them. Still concerned about West Street, but again, like you said, I realize this isn't the place. But now city staff will have heard that possibly.
The 75-foot question is a very good question. I'd like to have staff answer that at the appropriate time.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. Appreciate it.
Not exactly, well, let me first introduce myself, Elena Atkinson, former resident of Two Ten Elm. I was directly affected by construction that was going on right across the street, and I just would like to express some concerns regarding this new project. Number one, I would like to see if there is any kind of, I don't know if you call it curfew, or what, regarding noise in the neighborhood, because we resided just across the street from the construction site, and there were noises past eight, nine, and sometimes ten o'clock. Not to speak about them still beeping over weekend, and sometimes starting at six o'clock. We even had to call the city, complain about that. Second concern is the surface of the streets that are affected by construction. I know that Elm, oh, sorry, Maple Street, they have resurfaced. It's a different company, but pretty much project is very similar. They resurfaced the street, and it looks wonderful, but Elm Street, it was never beautifully perfect, but after the construction, it, it's much bumpier, much worse, and there are some huge, huge potholes there that affect people driving in and out of that area. So would like to see if there will be some kind of, you know, lines that construction will go along and will actually take care of the surface area after construction is completed.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to the item? There being none, we'll close the public hearing and ask for staff's, first, to the question in terms of the elevation, and then staff's alternatives.
All right. Seventy-five feet is from the finished floor level of the first story up to the highest point of the building. And the other two concerns about the noise, we do have a noise ordinance, and, you know, if the construction crew is not following the timeframe, then we need to know and turn it into code compliance. And the surface of the streets, part of the form-based code is the public realm. The developer is responsible for it, so they will probably be doing part of the, the public realm, and then, I'm not sure what will be in place at, at the time that it's needed. They may have to do a, pay for the rest of the public realm, but the streets eventually will be rebuilt and added to. So with that, we will go back to this. The alternatives are to accept findings and approve the three items on the alternative compliance as presented. Approve the three items of the alternative compliance with amendments. Accept findings on either item one, item two, or item three, and approve the specific items. Find that the items on the alternative compliance are not acceptable and deny the request, or find that either item one, item two, or item three is not acceptable and deny the specific request. Any more questions?
I, I have a procedural question.
Okay.
So get that pretty picture up there. What the, item number one, as presented, the staff presented one thing on the south and west side, but the architect came up, and my interpretation with the architect says the south and west side will carry this architectural concept, which we see up here, which has the brick, on all four sides. Is that as presented, or is that as amended? Since the staff presented one thing, and the architect presented something else.
Presented with the staff's presentation. And the devils from the staff's presentation is the proposed amendment to staff's presentation.
Okay. Thank you.
I would like some clarification, though. I don't think I heard her say that all foursides would be. I heard along Elm Street. Can y'all clarify that for us, please? Please, sir. Just want to make sure.
I, I'll agree.
One, sample with Humphreys Architects. So I'll be the architect that's working on the production through C.A. on the project. The materials carry all the way around the building. So each one of the bays that you see in the rendering, whether it's on Maple or on Duck, that will go all the way around, so it'll be consistent on West as well as on Elm Street. So we have stone that carries around the base, and we'll have a brick veneer in the body, and then we'll have stuck in, a stucco up top. So you have, definitely have consistency all the way around the building, one hundred percent. And the seventy-five foot, as Patty mentioned, is from finished floor level to our top, our tallest parapet on top of the roof.
And so there may be some areas that from the ground to the top may be slightly more than seventy-five foot, because your first floor may be above the ground elevation. Is that a correct statement?
Uh, we, yes, we have to set the, the final finished floor elevation at ground.
Yes.
We have not set that yet. We're still working through utilities and trying to make sure we set that at the right location. But my understanding of the code was that that was supposed to be measured from ground floor to highest point.
I'm just clarifying for the audience that when they measure from the ground up to the top building, it may be more than seventy-five foot when everything's finished.
Absolutely.
But, but it is from the first floor up there, and I fully understand that.
Yes.
Thanks for the clarification.
So, discussion among commissioners, how would you all like to proceed? You want to tackle these one things at a time?
I, I am, I'm in favor of all three, as long as we have that architectural look on four sides. I, the only item that, that I had some reservation was about the blade sign, and with one blade sign instead of two, I think that they meet the intent, in my mind, you know, because now it's a hundred square foot for one instead of two fifties. So, and to me, it fits well on the building, so I don't have a problem with any of three. As amended, where all four sides get the look as presented in the pretty picture.
I concur with that, Mike, and I think a sign, you know, half the size of that blade sign wouldn't be proportional to the building. And again, as you said, they just have one sign and are allowed to, so I don't have a problem combining two into one, I guess.
I don't necessarily agree. I mean, so the presentation from the architects about their reasoning for how they're meeting sort of the spirit of the form-based code is convincing. On the other hand, I'm a little confused about why we have form-based codes if we're not going to enforce them.
I'll give you my perspective, and then other people can give you their perspective. It's a form. It's, it's what we want in a general form, and we want the architects and the developer to take that basic concept. And the basic concept is, we want a pedestrian scale, and we want to not have a big wall right there, and we want to have a concentration of the population near the campus that reduces the infrastructure and for streets and other things across the city, so we can have people bike and walk to class instead of always taking their cars. You know, we have seventeen thousand five hundred parking spaces on our campus, and we'd rather not expand on that.
I absolutely agree, and I've never parked my car.
So, so to me, we, what we want to do is set it back ten foot at the, above the fourth floor, and that is a way of making this a non-Cavernan area. And by setting it back every few feet, five foot, I would, I, I believe that's been addressed. And then it's, then we've got an extra wide sidewalk over most of the areas, and with the landscaping, I feel it met the intent of the form code. And working government all my life, I don't like regulations that, "We have to go this way because the code says this." I think there's an intent, and we need to have some latitude in that area. So that's my perspective.
And I kind of feel the same way. I think with form-based code, it does give us a little more flexibility in how the actual building is going to look. I get what you're saying, those are rules, and I understand if you're not going to follow them, why have them? But I think there are situations where a ten-foot step back may be a good thing to have. Personally, in this situation, I don't feel that it's, I think they addressed it with the setbacks in the building, and had, in my mind, met the intent of the, the, you know, setback above the fourth floor. Again, they're limited to seventy-five feet because they're in the OSU overlay, and so, you know, that's already holding the, the height of the building down. So I, I'm good with it. And again, I hope to answer your question, I understand what you said, but it also gives us latitude as well.
I don't know, I just, I worry, I mean, a seventy-five-foot-high wall, however colored, is still seven, seven stories tall when you're standing next to it, and I think the issue is about the human scale of it. I like the way they've architecturally designed, I mean, I think it's, it's of a harmonious peace. But nevertheless, it's still the fact is, is you're going to have a seven-story building looming over you as you stand there. And the idea of the setback was so that no person walking, in essence, had more than five stories high that they look up, that they see. And so the setback was, was not to create the harmoniousness, was, was to give you a sense of a smaller scale, which is why I worry that although the, the way they've delineated it gives it a lot of harmony and color, it doesn't break up the sense that you're still going to be standing next to a seven, a seven-story building tall, standing straight up above you, you know, with balconies and things of that sort. But that's not going to break it down anymore. It's not like a, if you think of walking down a, a cityscape of four-story walk-ups, I mean, you, you can tell the difference between that and a seven-story thing, no matter how many balconies there are on the, on the walk-ups. So I mean, that's, with regard to that, and then on the sign, just that, you know, a hundred-foot sign right on the corner next to our YMCA, I just think that's going to be an enormous sign. And, you know, in terms of height and its overall thing, I think it's going to loom over Elm in a way that I'm not as sanguine about it's being in scale with the building. It may very well be, but, but it's the overall scale there that I worry a little bit about that, as far as the awning thing. We've been working with the awnings before, so. I mean, I'm just, you know, we've been burned on some signage things, and so I just want to make sure that we at least understand that. But I just think that seventy-five feet straight up from that street, even if you're back off the thing, is, that's a lot. Color delineation notwithstanding, it's still going to be a really tall building standing as you stand on that corner.
Do you want to vote on each item separately?
I think that'd probably be to, to my preference. I don't want to push that above it, if that'll help us move along, then yes, that'd be great.
So I'll move that we accept findings on item number one as amended, where the south elevation and the materials on the south elevation, which is the pretty picture, appears on all four sides.
And item number one being what?
Being, being the setback.
So you're saying you want the setback, or you do not want the setback?
I do not want the setback. I want to accept the finding as proposed, which is to make the south elevation the similar on all four sides.
Okay. Thanks for the clarification. I'll second that.
It has been moved and seconded that we accept the findings as proposed with the, all the way around, and so we will now vote on that.
Okay. I'll have to take a verbal vote, because I didn't split up the voting software to do all three items separately.
All right.
So, item number one, Mr. Rickelman?
No.
Ms. Ross?
No.
Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Item ties, two noes to two yeses. Did not pass.
All right. All right. Motion did not pass, two to two. Do the, shall I move to the second?
I move that we approve, accept finds and prove the item number two, which is the awnings.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the awning or the part two as recommended. Those will then have a vote.
Okay. Mr. Rickelman?
Yes.
Ms. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Motion passes four to no.
Motion passes four to no. If someone would like, or I hate to keep you up to do though, but.
I move, we accept finds and prove item number three, which is the blade signage at not exceed a hundred square feet.
Second.
All right. It's moved and, been moved and seconded, and we'll now have the vote.
Mr. Rickelman?
No.
Ms. Ross?
No.
Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Two noes to two yeses, motion does not pass.
All right. All right, the next, going to the next item?
I mean, what do we do? I mean, if an item doesn't pass, I mean, it's got to go somewhere, because a decision has to be made.
We table it?
If you have a proposed second, or second drive, okay. Okay. Try something, that would be an alternative, or something that would help a little more on any of those? I mean.
I just, I feel like this is such a big building in the neighborhood. There's nothing nearly that large. I feel like there needs to be more of an attempt to kind of ease that contrast between, at most, two-story buildings and a seven-story building. And especially, I mean, it's a huge construction. I feel like if we're not kind of applying the form-based code regulation to the largest constructions in that area, I, I feel, I don't know, I feel like it sets a precedent for, you know, a lot.
I would like to do something if this commission accepted, and then asks for the architect to come back up here and see if the architect has any suggestions. Is it acceptable, the commission, to do that?
The commission wants to receive further input.
Does the architect want to come up here? And you've had a good sixty seconds to think about this.
Thank you for inviting me back up. I appreciate it. I wanted to address the, the intent versus spirit question about the code and the way we, we took it and moved with it. And you mentioned, I think, one of the examples was like New York, and having the brownstones and things that line the built, line the street and rise straight up from the edge of the street. When we looked at the project, we were sensitive, we wanted to be sensitive to that, and the, we felt that the push and pull along the edge, along with the extra wide sidewalks, was better, a better use and a better holder of what the pedestrian space is going to be like. People don't live at the fourth floor. People live down at the street. And so adding the material changes and pushing away from the street in order to give larger spaces against the street felt more inviting to us, and more in keeping with what needed to happen along the edges of the property and moving into the, moving back into the campus. So especially along, along Duck, where we have, you know, we're about twenty-five feet off the edge of the street, we actually stepped back, there are a couple of areas as, as you move north along to, to Elm, where we actually widen and step back away from the street even further than twenty-five feet. So we're creating large spaces that then can go up vertical that are unobstructed to the sky, and we thought that was really important. Along with the materials and having storefront down at the, at the, at the base, we feel like that was going to be a very pedestrian-friendly environment. Versus trying to maximize and push the building up to the edge of the sidewalk, go up straight four stories, and then wedding cake step back up for the rest of the building.
So how much further under the code could you have gone to the street?
Uh, there's another, depending on what, how we set the building, I think there's another three or four feet there. But more importantly, I think we would have got, we could have gotten rid of the bays, which would have been really oppressive, and nobody really wants that. which would have been really oppressive, and nobody really wants that. I mean, we want something that has character because it is a long block, and we want to maintain that. And it is important. And actually, when you turn off of Duck on the Elm or Maple, the sidewalk widens up. So, we're actually... we have 25 feet from the edge of the street to the building. The sidewalk is about six, and there's some landscaping buffers and things of that nature. But when you turn on the Maple or on Elm, it widens up to 11-foot sidewalks. So, once again, we feel like that widening of the sidewalks and actually let the building step back from the property line and then has a rhythm of five feet in and out, plus some other larger divots, really holds the character, is what we're looking for. We can go back and try and study that step at the fourth level, but I think it would... if we start to step back there, we're going to push out of the base, and ultimately, I don't think the pedestrian is going to lose a little bit if we end up doing that. And I'd rather... I think this is about the pedestrian. I really want to make sure we maintain that character.
In terms of the signage, what could you say a little bit more about having a large sign on the corner?
Yeah, yeah.
Versus on both corners?
You're right. All right. So, the sign was intended to always be somewhat in alignment with the capital of the building, the crown of the building, and that was never going to protrude out past the property line. We are flexible on the sign. I mean, if we want to break that down to two different signs or something that's a little bit smaller, I mean, that can be done. I think that's one of the easier pieces that we can make... we can make happen whatever you want to make happen.
Does the elevation... does the picture, the color picture, did it render? Did it show the signage in it on that corner?
Oh, it did.
In there? I'm sorry.
I don't know. I don't want to go back. I'll mess it up.
Yeah. It does show it on there.
Yeah.
Let's put it up.
So, it does show it vertical there on the thing. But like I said, we're flexible with that. I mean, that can go... we can bring that size down. We can break that into two. We can put it horizontal on top of the canopy if that makes... if there's a little bit more comfort with adding that to the top of the canopy at the corner. I think all those are very doable, and it's not a problem.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah. Anything? Thank you.
I think I feel... with that, I feel a little more amenable on the signage issue vis-à-vis, you know, that I think, you know... I was just worried there's going to be this huge thing sticking out from the corner, hulking over Duck. So, I think if you'd like to repropose his previous motions?
So, I will move that we accept finds and approve item number three as presented, which is the signage.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded.
Okay. Mr. Rickelman?
Yes.
Ms. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
How shall we proceed with regard to our big issue?
Do you have a suggestion?
I'm the problem here for now. Okay, so, my sense is the goal is not just to not scare pedestrians by having hulking buildings over them, but to encourage pedestrian traffic, in fact, or bicycle traffic, right, to draw people to the area. And so, I don't know. Maybe my problem is less what it looks like, but what I don't see, which is, you know, retail at the bottom or restaurants or something for... to draw pedestrians there other than a leasing office. And I know that's not a part of this at all, so.
Actually, it could be.
I would love it to be. Can we make recommendations about that?
That's the beauty of form-based code. I mean, it's... you're welcome to discuss it. You know, I don't know that that's something the developers are going to want to do.
So, the developers haven't come forward with that, and I'm not sure if that's going to come... if we can require that. One of the things that maybe in terms of making this more pedestrian-friendly along Duck is what I heard the developer say was is a six-foot sidewalk along Duck. What would you think if we made that 11-foot sidewalk? And then on the... above the fourth story, we make that a five-foot setback instead of a 10-foot setback?
Can we make requirements about things like having benches in the area next to the sidewalk or...
I'm going to have to defer to staff on that one.
Can we ask Ms. Harris to come back up because she would like to come back up?
My understanding is that it's outside the request, so you're going to be on the scope of what was before you?
Yeah.
And stick to what the request was and pass it or decline it?
We've been given our legal discussion, and I went beyond the scope.
Well, I didn't do much.
And so... but within the scope, we could require a five-foot step back above the fifth floor instead of a zero foot or a 10-foot. That's within the scope, right?
My understanding of architecture, yes.
Kelly really wants to come address something.
Someone up? Did someone want to come up?
Kelly here, sorry.
Kelly, if you wanted to come up and tell us?
Yeah. Or our staff to come back up and give you the staff's interpretation? Kind of walk you through that as to what's in and what's outside the scope?
Okay.
Could we have staff come up and do that? And we could... could we ask staff to come up and tell us what's within, what's not within our scope?
Okay. With the form-based code, of course, there are two items that come before the planning commission. Alternative compliance is one. Warrant is the other. And alternative compliance is where the applicant does not necessarily meet all of the specifics of the code, but they propose an alternative, and it's on the applicant to demonstrate compliance with the intent. And that's what you have before you tonight. A warrant is similar to a variance request, and that would be the 10-foot is required, but we'll give them... we'll require five. That would be a more of a warrant request, not a consideration of what they have proposed. Is their alternative compliant with the intent? That is the request tonight. Whether there's any retail in it or not, that's beyond their request that they have this evening. The width of the sidewalk is beyond their request that they have this evening because those things are already set forth in other parts of the form-based code. So, here again, the alternative compliance tonight is, is their alternative that they have proposed compliant enough with the intent of the form-based code for that non-looming effect that it has? Does that help? I tried to keep that off the camera.
I understand. You know, when I do this, I am not completely agreeing with your statement. So, one of your items, item two, says approve the three items of alternative compliance with amendments, and we actually made an amendment. So, why wouldn't the five-foot be an amendment?
Because the amendment was based on the carrying the theme that the architects had proposed throughout or around the entire building as part of their alternative compliance request. Instead of having this in-step or the step-back and carrying it all the way around, they have chose to do different colors and different material scheme. That is the amendment that I heard sitting out in the audience that the planning commission had discussed.
So, if they come up and recommend this other option, that would be an amendment?
If they... if the architect would like to amend their alternative compliance request, that would have to be tabled by the planning commission, possibly. I would need legal advice on that because their scope, their request, is now changing to where it is more of a warrant, where they're seeking a variance to not have to do the 10, but do the five. It's not a materials. It's not a theme that they're proposing.
I understand. If we deny this item number one, what is the process if they have an alternative item number one in the future to come back? Do the staff give public notice?
Yes.
And pay for that public notice? Will it be a whole new?
Whole new application.
Okay.
Yes, it will.
Thank you.
Yes. Any other questions while I'm up here?
I'm just going to... I'm going to make a kind of a general statement. I've had, since we've adopted form-based code, that was probably the biggest thorn in my side, was that step-back requirement at four stories. I think that's too low. I think any big city you go to, walk down the street, it goes... there are tall stretches of multiple stories before any step-back occurs. And so, of form-based code, I've always had a problem with that particular item and still do personally. So, I'm probably always going to be the naysayer to that or the person to approve it. But even up to the 100 feet, if it's out of, it's still in the high-rise district, but out of the OSU overlay. I just, from a buildability standpoint, it is very difficult to step those in, especially, I don't know what type of structure you guys are doing. But still structural...
Put the pretty picture up again?
You know, still a little bit easier to do that. Wood, really tough.
Okay.
So...
It was... I'm sorry. It wasn't on... it wasn't on TV.
Anyway, I just wanted to put that out there, that that's always been a problem for me before.
Kelly's still raising her hand.
Take anything from the audience at all? I mean, is that possible, or is it really where to this point now?
To me, this fits the intent of form-based code where it's setback. It's setback not at the fourth story level, but it's setback as you go along there. And to me, this is a pedestrian-friendly design.
And I could trade the setbacks in and out for the vertical or horizontal setback above the four. And I think that was the intent or what everybody was saying here.
Having four stories straight up and straight right next to the sidewalk versus going in and out, I like this better than that, and I think that adheres to the intent of the form-based code.
You're going to repropose your previous?
I move that we accept finds and approve item number one as amended by the architect, which gives that facade on all four sides.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. We accept the number one or alternative one with the amendment by the architect that it's going to go all the way around the sides, or at least that it is, in fact, all the way around the sides at the same construction.
Mr. Rickelman?
Yes.
Ms. Ross?
No.
Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Motion passes three to one.
The next item for business is Richard Landice, UDM for Discussion, Puplat, Risha Schneider, map amendment rezoning, PZ-17-2244, requesting review and approval of a map amendment, rezoned property addressed as 1501 South Perkins Road and 619 East 15th Avenue from RSS Residential Single Family to CG Commercial General Evans.
All right. This property is... 1501 is right here on Perkins Road. 619 is to the east of it, so they are adjacent, just with an alley between them. 1501 is currently zoned RSS Residential Small Lot Single Family, but there is CG to the north and the east. There is RSS to the south and currently RSS to the east, which is their property also. 619 is also zoned RSS, and there is RSS to the north, the east, and the south. And depending upon your decision tonight, this 1501 could stay RSS or CG. All right. Here's some photos of the properties. This is 1501 South Perkins Road. This is Perkins Road in front of it. It has two structures on it that... they have a large one right here, and then there's this little small house in the back by the alley. Currently, this is being used. The front part of it's being used for storage, and there are two apartments in this back portion of the building. And the little house is, I think, used for storage. It's not being occupied at the time. And 619 East 15th Avenue has one structure on it. It's a concrete block structure, approximately 1,750 square feet. It's been a commercial use in the past. There is a little sign there that says... sorry. Why did that come up? Okay. You can see the sign there that says Jack's Warehouse or something in tile. Anyway, it... but it's lost its legal non-conforming status because it's been unused for so long. The applicant wanted to remodel this structure for commercial use, but he could not pull a commercial building permit with it zoned residential. So, that's why he is wanting to change this to CG. And then in our discussions, we found out that the property on Perkins was also his, so that's why we included both of them into the map amendment. In this bottom photo, this is Hartford. This is 15th. Here's the structure in question. And you can see there is some... quite a bit of property. This sits on the alley, so there is a lot of property in front of it. And so, you might think that there is enough room to put another building in there, or if this one's demolished, to put up a bigger building. But if this is changed to CG, with the setbacks, he would have a five-foot-wide building. So, there is not any way that he's going to be able to put another building on there that's going to be of any use. And if the property is rezoned, the applicant will have to provide off-street parking, so he'll have to be on this property. And also, it will have to be screened on all three sides from the residential areas, either with a privacy fence, a wall, vegetation, or a combination of some of those. And of course, the zoning comparison chart between RSS and CG, everything is different except the minimum rear yard boundary with the residential district. That's at 20 feet for both zoning districts. Everything else is different. And here are the boundaries that you can see, which will make a difference in whether they can put a building on it or not. Residential... the minimum side yard with the residential district in the RSS is only five feet, but in the CG it's 20. The minimum front yard is 20 feet for residential, 25 feet for the CG. So, that 25 and the 20 on the sides is 45, and the lot is only 50 feet wide, so. The findings include the C3 plan does support the commercial zoning for 1501 South Perkins. The C3 plan does not support the commercial zoning for 619 East 15th. Perkins Road is a principal arterial. 15th Avenue and Hartford Street are local streets. A mixture of commercial and residential uses is located along Perkins Road. And to establish a commercial use at 619 East 15th, the property must be rezoned to commercial. a commercial use at 619 East 15th, the property must be rezoned to commercial as the non-conforming use is lost. Are there any questions?
If there are no questions, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the item, please step forward, give your name and address for the record.
My name's Rick Snyder, I'm proposing the zoning changes. I don't have fancy drawings like that, but the city did ask for particular layouts that I would be, how I'd be doing remodeling the building, and there's also a list of the improvements that would be made to comply with this request.
As she stated, there's, at 1501 South Perkins Road, at the present time, there's a warehouse, house and two living quarters, one of them being a one-bedroom apartment, and another two-bedroom apartment, and then a separate structure known as 605 East 15th, which is an efficiency, this building's in disrepair, error, and then of course, at 619, we have this block, cement block building that is in disrepair and has been neglected for a long time with some colorful past, and having the property next door, I do wanna clean it up, and tie 'em together, other. My intent on the block building is to turn it into some type of tradesperson, office, shop, maybe it'll for electrician, a plumber, where he can have an office where their crew can come in there, air meet, get ready, grab their equipment, their tools, or their work truck, and go to their job sites. So, it'd be a very low-traffic area, there wouldn't be a lot of people coming and going all the time, which is some of the concerns of the neighborhood. Building of this size, probably, if they had four or five employees, it'd probably be that, that's what you'd get, yeah. Like I said, I wanna put a new roof on it, new windows. I know the city's aware of the condition of this property. I purchased it on July 21st of this year, year, and I was gone out of town over the weekend, and when I came back on Tuesday, I walked up to the building on Wednesday, and there was a citation from the city code enforcement's there to secure the buildings and to clean it up, to get rid of it, and it was addressed to the previous owner, owner, so it's a situation that does need to be taken care of. I did call code enforcement and told them I'd just purchased the property, and code enforcement said, hey, put some glass in the windows, because they were busted out, we had had trouble with transits and people, well, he sold it because he couldn't secure the property, let's just put it that way, that's why the previous owners sold it. So, I did put in some glass in the, some of the broken windows, we still have other windows that need, as the pictures show, that are nasty, I don't know how else to say it, but they need to be cleaned up. And I just think it would be a viable source of providing, it's a, something that would fit with the neighborhood, just to give you some example, ample, I drove around a little bit today, in that same neighborhood, okay, there's, there's also a lot of small shops, or type of businesses that I'm proposing in the neighborhood. For example, at 801 East 14th, there's an HVAC contractor, or, or, no, he's at 702 East 14th, 801 East 14th, there's a cement contractor, or 805, I have is a woodworking shop, 807, I think it's a towing company, A, A, and then on the west side, we have several other businesses of the same kind, which is a Life Net, or ambulance service, it's off of Perkins Road, it's a half-block in there, Habitat for Humanities, a block off of the neighborhood, custom signs, overhead doors, or some Frontier Fire Protection, all of these are on side streets in this neighborhood, or in there within three to four blocks. So, what I'm proposing is nothing new, it's just a better use of the property with the minimal amount of impact. If there's a better zoning that we can do, that, because some of the neighbors, being GC, A, there's been rumors that it was gonna be a bar, it's gonna be all this wild, crazy stuff, and that is not the intent. And I'm flexible, oh, to put another single-family dwelling, anybody knows that it costs a little over $100,000 to build a little 1,200-square-foot house. Well, the neighborhood will not justify that. Some of the neighbors that says, oh, it'll decrease the value of the property, well, commercial land sells for eight to $12 a square foot, so their $60,000 house, if you bulldozed it down, would be worth $80,000. So, it's not gonna take away from the value of the property, it's only gonna enhance the value of their property and make it more valuable, oh, as long as we can control the amount of traffic, I, because it is, it's, the only place, Tucker Town is the only area of town where a young couple that doesn't have a lot of money can buy a house for under $100,000. And these kids need that, and, but also, they need to be able to, when their kids walk down that street, they need to be able to say, hey, hey, this is Joe Bob's Electric Shop, I could become an electrician when I grow up, instead of, hey, that's where I bought my first joint, or did that crack, or whatever. We don't need that in our town. That's all I got to say. Oh, and if we wanna rezonate to something else, where we can make a better Stillwater, I'm all in favor of it.
Hey, Rick, I have a question for you.
Yes.
Have you given in consideration, or done a pro forma, on make it, converting the block building to residential? That way, it's still a residential zoning, I'm just asking.
Right. I could probably make it a Dan Tanna, or, well, you guys, some of you are way too young to remember Dan Tanna, but he was on a TV show where he drove in his house, and he jumped out, and his living room was in the shop. In other words, and we could do that, but past experience has taught me, those are the people that are not as business-oriented, and consequently, you have a better chance of having somebody that is not as reputable as a business that has a few employees.
I guess I was gonna say, make it strictly residential, maybe a duplex, I mean, I don't know if your return would work there or not, by being able to remodel the building.
It's so nasty, I mean.
Again, I'm just.
Yeah, it's, it would be hard to justify it, especially a duplex, because the two central heat and airs, two electrical services. We do have some duplex housing a half-block away, a two-family zoning, owning, but it really wouldn't be feasible. It's gonna be about a $50,000 remodel anyway, A, just to bring it up into a shape, A, of a small commercial shop. Any other questions?
Thank you, sir. Would anyone else wish to speak in favor of the item, please step forward, give your name and address for the record. Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the item, please step forward, give your name and address for the record.
I'm Elta Simpson, 1518 South Hartford, and I've lived there since 1970. This building he's wanting to repair, this block he wants to rezonate, says it's a business. When I moved there in 1970, the sign is there, like he said, but there's been no business out of that building. This is a residential neighborhood, where, right across the street where the 619 is, is a bus pickup. That's one bus, there are six buses altogether, that pick up from the smallest aged children to the high-school-aged children. This is not a good thing for a single-family neighborhood. I don't see how, and he's talking about the businesses up on 14th Street, those have been grandfathered in, they've been there all the time I've been there. And so, I, so the business that he's talking about, the old block building, that was grandfathered in, but it hasn't been in use since 1970. Mr. Venter's lived there, till the city took the old house down, and now it's sitting there, and I'd rather have the, it sit there, than you make it commercial, where he can put whatever the city would allow him to put there, on that building. It needs to be, stay residential for the protection of the children and the people that wanna walk their dogs, or kids on bicycles, tricycles. It's always been a safe place for us to do, but to go commercial, it's not gonna be safe, no matter what, what he does with. As a neighborhood, we've no objection of changing the zoning of the residential to commercial for the first lot on Perkins Road and 15th, 1503 Perkins Road. We are opposed to the zoning change from residential to commercial for the second lot, the corner of 15th and Hartford, 619 East 15th. Hartford is a three-block-long street, and it's also Springfield, Pennsylvania, and can't think of the other one, and that has two blocks long. That is our whole Tucker addition, which is a very small neighborhood, and he's right about, people wanna buy small places in, in places like that. They'd rather live in a neighborhood than they would in these big apartment houses, or a lot of them would, some of them like to live in a big apartment. And I hope the commission that I'm speaking to has reviewed our letters of protest in your packet. They contain very specific issues in addressing our objections. If not, I'll be happy to read what was in your packet.
I personally read all, everything in the packet.
You want?
I've read everything in the packet, you don't need to read it.
Thank you. We want to make sure it is safe to walk our, to our neighbor's house, for our children to play and ride bikes, walk our pets, and just enjoy being outside. There's no sidewalks to get around, except out in the street. We had one short sidewalk on 14th, where he was talking about these businesses. We want to be good neighbors, and hope that the applicant wants also to be a good neighbor. However, we believe that more appropriate use for the lot at 15th and Hartford would be a single-family home, which a lot of the homes down there, at one time, at the end of Hartford, was a horse, where horses were. Now, there's two houses that's been moved in there, and Mrs. Presley has lived there before I have, they were the Coke distributor, and used to live on Perkins Road, right next to what his lot that he bought that's on Perkins Road, and he was the Coca-Cola distributor, Claude Presley. So, the building that is now Oaky Motors was the Coke building, and Mrs. Presley lived in the 1,600 block of, of a house that was moved in, and this is another thing he could do, put a single, there's a lot of houses that are being taken down, different places that could be put in that area. We just wanna keep it residential, where it's safe for our children and everybody that lives there. It's just a small neighborhood. I thank you for letting me speak to you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I did wanna make an announcement that we all rece.
If you wanna ask me any questions?
Was there any question?
No.
Thank you, ma'am, we really appreciate that. We all did receive in a packet of email of a number of letters, and I wanted to let y'all know that that, for the record, that we did receive four or five letters and some emails, things of that sort, not the same matter, including the letter she was reading from there as well. Is that, would anyone else wish to speak in opposition to the item? Please step forward, give your name and address for the record.
I'm Dorothy Marion, and my husband, John Marion, is here, and we're from Moll Hall, but we bought that house on 1521 South Hartford, and I was wondering, is that rezoning going up Hartford all the way, or is it just down at that end?
Just that one parcel, that's the only piece that's being.
Okay, I don't have any objections at that, then, but I just wanted to find out for certain, because my daughter's handicapped, and we bought that house, and we, it's handicapped accessible, and we had closed the porch, or the carport, and made a garage, and put a safe room in there for her, and I just wanted it to be that she is safe, and I think that's been a safe place for her. And she does work, have to work at Empire, and will the OSU ramp bus still be able to come and pick her up?
There's no change in that.
Okay.
In that area.
Because she's used the taxi before, when she lived up on Matthews, and they drove for a block to Red Lobster, and it cost her $6 each way, and that's more than she can make, you know?
I understand, we get, Oklahoma State University gets federal funds to allow that system to occur, and we're still getting federal funds, so the system will occur for the near future, or until we lose those federal funds.
Well, I, I was kind of under the wrong impression about this, but anyway, she does work out the workshop for handicap, and she does go to Red Lobster on Fridays to roll silverware, and she has to use the public transportation ramp for that, and she rolls silverware from 9:00 to 12:00. So, if they can still come in there, I'd be, I would be happy about that. Thank you very much, and like I said, I'm in Moll Hall, Oklahoma, and you need our address or not?
You can give it in, for the, just for the record, your name and address would be, would be helpful. Yes, ma'am, right into the microphone.
John and Dorothy Marion, 5849 West Highway 51, Moll Hall, 73063 is our zip. Thank you.
Thank you so much, appreciate it. Does anyone else wish to speak in opposition to the item? Please step forward.
Well, I agree, my name's Mike Mauck, I live 1411 South Hartford, and I agree with the lady that was up here earlier, I have grandkids that stand on that corner at 8:00, 8:30 in the morning to get on the bus, and if you put a commercial parking lot there, it's gonna interfere with the kids. There's a lot of kids in the neighborhood, I got other grandkids that come through, and I don't wanna see traffic at all. You're just making the neighborhood smaller, and there's not much there to begin with, and I'd rather not see, you know, see anything. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to the item? Please step forward and give your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and ask for staff's alternatives.
The alternatives are to accept findings and recommend that the city council approve the proposed map amendment as presented for 1501 South Perkins and 619 East 15th. Find that the request is appropriate for 1501 South Perkins Road, and recommend that the city council approve the proposed map amendment for 1501 South Perkins Road. However, find that the request is not appropriate for 619 East 15th, and recommend that the city council deny the map amendment. The third alternative is find that the map amendment is not an appropriate use for either of the properties, based upon the impacts to the surrounding vicinity, and do not recommend that the city council approve the map amendment. An alternative for, find that additional information is needed, and table the request to a certain date. Any other questions for me?
Questions for staff? All right. In discussion among the commissioners.
Well, my, my blush is, obviously, the parcel up on Perkins Road needs to be commercial. I, I'm as adamant about that being commercial as I am probably about the other parcel not being commercial. So, uh, I'm, my, my vote would be for alter- alternative number two.
Can I just clarify? The existing structure is on six nineteen, right?
Yes.
Fifteen.
That's what I understand.
Which is?
The block structure is on six nineteen.
Which is not the parcel that is on Perkins.
That's correct.
And what the owner was wanting to do was use that building as a commercial area.
That's what I understood.
Okay. So, then, your, your sense that the property on Perkins needs to be commercial and the other one should not be commercial seems to run counter exactly to how he wants to use the property.
It may run counter, but it is in full compliance with the C-three plan, and I think, I think this is our opportunity to add some more commercial along Perkins Road, and so I'm in agreement that one needs to be commercial and one doesn't need to be commercial, even though the request is different from the applicant.
I mean, the, the cinder block building is dilapidated. I mean, the roof is, is in, I mean, it's, it's, it's such an eyesore to the community and, and to that area. I'm surprised that someone wanting to turn it into something where someone could actually rent it and be useful would be a worse use than what this neighborhood wants. They would rather have the burned out, or whatever you could call it. I drove by it, and, and a dilapidated structure that they can't keep secure, it's been sited. They'd rather have that than one that's a commercial, and, and I suppose, I find that a little surprising. I would think that there would be worse dangers from having it just, no one there at all. So I understand there, but there, but there are other uses perhaps for that space, but I'm surprised by that at least.
I am not surprised by that, 'cause the, it's the city's duty under code enforcement to make sure they've been secure, and if it's not secure, then, uh, there'll be steps that could end up demolishing that building. So they'd rather have, they go through that process, I'm reading their mind, than, than, than make it a commercial use, and if it's a commercial zone, this owner currently wants to have something that may sort of fit in the neighborhood, but the next person that buys it can do anything associated with commercial zoning, which may be very detrimental to the neighborhood. So I can understand where they're coming from.
Do we have a motion? You wanna make this one?
Yeah, that'll be fine. Uh, I'll, I'll make the motion, uh, to find the request is appropriate for fifteen oh one South Perkins Road and recommend that the city council approve the proposed MAP amendment for fifteen oh one South Perkins Road. However, find that the request is not appropriate for six nineteen East Fifteenth and recommend that the city council deny the MAP amendment for six nineteen East Fifteenth.
Second?
All right. You did that very well.
Sometimes I can read.
I can't, I can't take that all back, but as he just said it, that, that option of the, to approve commercial on the Perkins Road and not approve on the other.
Correct.
Yes. It's been moved, so we'll go ahead and vote. Three yes and one no, the motion passes. So we'll now go on to the next item for business is Stillwater Public Schools MAP amendment rezoning PZ dash seventeen dash two-two-four-six, requesting review and approval of a MAP amendment to rezone block eight and nine to Duck Edition, two entire blocks between Willis Street and McFarland from fourth to sixth, from RSS, single-family, and within Westwood Neighborhood Conservation Overlay to P Public.
Tom Koots, Development Services. Try to go through this one a little bit faster than we have been, so stop me if, uh, you lose me. All right, the prop, the request is from Stillwater Public Schools. They've, they've bought the properties for the redevelopment of the Westwood Elementary School. Uh, basically, two blocks of property. They did own a little bit for, they had a parking lot on, and, um, their plans going forward would be to, they're, they're looking to demolish the houses that are currently there and rebuild the school on these two blocks, and then the part where the school is now will be kind of the playground in the future. But since they own the properties, they're requesting that it be zoned to the public zoning district. The surrounding neighborhood i- is in the Westwood Overlay District, and it's a single-family around these, these houses. And, um, the street view, this is a street view from Sixth Avenue, looking at their parking lot that they have currently, and then this is a street view from, uh, Fourth and, and, Willis, looking toward the southwest. It is, as I said, currently, there's single, there's houses there. They've been purchased by the school district, and they're in, in process of being demolished or removed from the property. Findings are basically that the properties are owned by the Stillwater Public Schools. The public district is for public uses, that would include the, the school use. Uh, this does, by the nature of the Westwood Overlay, it would remove them, this, these properties from the Westwood Overlay District, and, uh, this is for the, uh, Westwood Elementary School to be redeveloped. Do you have any questions for me?
No question. Thank you, sir. Anyone wishing, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the item? Please step forward, give your name and address for the record.
Mark Moore, Superintendent at Stillwater Schools, uh, address is three eighteen A South Knoblock. Really have the information there in your packet. I'll just, available for any comment, questions if you have any. I don't know, it's, uh, you've had a long evening, so if you have questions, I'll be available for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak in favor of the item? Please step forward. I don't think there's anyone else in the room. All right? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the item? Please step forward. There being none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for staff's alternatives.
Tom Koots, again, we have our regular alternatives. We can recommend approval of the request to the city council, and, or we can find that the request is not appropriate for the property and request denial of the request, um, or we can continue to a certain date to gather any information that we need to make a decision.
I move accept finds, recommend the city council approve the proposed MAP amendment as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve, uh, the MAP amendment as staff presented.
I would like to make a comment.
Oh, sure, ma'am, sure.
I would just like to say that I'm really excited to see our school system growing like it is. You know, that's the future of our town, is our schools. And, uh, you know, kudos to school board and staff for the improvements we've made in our elementaries in the past, you know, ten years, so really appreciate that. Thanks.
Well, thank you. We'll go ahead and vote then.
You guys hurry. Cast your votes.
Cast your votes. Here we go. Uh, the vote is for yes to no, no, and so, um, the motion passes. Let's see, um, the next item for business is the approval of meeting summary for discussion of possible action of the regular meeting September nineteenth, twenty seventeen.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to, motion and seconded to approve the meeting of September seventeen. The motion passes four to zero. Misleading them for staff for discussion. Next planning commission meeting is October seventeenth, twenty seventeen. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
The move and second to adjourn. Four zero passes. Thank you all very much.
Mark comes out there. He did good. Good job, Mark.
Do we have something?
Yes, sir.
This Thursday, September fifth.
You guys are troopers.
Safety doesn't just happen. You have to think about it, and you have to work on it. We train our employees to take every situation seriously and take the proper precautions, because sending every employee home safe is our number one goal.
Hi, I'm Clint with Stillwater Electric Utility. One of the important things that we focus on is communication. One way that we accomplish this is every morning, prior to everybody leaving out on the job site, we have a crew chief meeting to go over their daily task. This is also performed at the job with the crew chief, going over with each individual crew member what their responsibilities are for their given task for that day. This time, we have a situation set up where our crew chief will show you how we accomplish that.
Okay, today, we're gonna fix a floating phase on this pole. We've already notified BLS. We put the reclosure on one shot. Darrell, I'm gonna have you and Adam go up and fix it. We need to remember that we're probably gonna need at least four line hoses, one rubber blanket for the arm, uh, make sure you're controlling that thing at all times, it is still hot. Josh, I'm gonna need you to assist on the ground, you and Ronnie, anything that we might need. Everybody understand their job assignments?
Yes, sir.
Hi. Hoping for a crisp breeze to help keep you alert. Oh, oh, he took a sip of water, too. That'll probably help. You were probably gonna turn down the radio, too, so you could focus, right?
Probably okay isn't okay. If you see a warning sign, stop and call a cab, a car, or a friend.
I think the water line is what really drove it home. I blew on him.